I'm going to ask everyone's forbearance because we have new mics that now require that we actually push a button for the entire time we talk. And we will forget that that is a requirement this evening, so please wave your hand if we're talking without the mic on. So Commissioner Cruz, Commissioner Ocon, thank you. I'm just, I'm still feverish.
Do I take a break?
Yeah, can we just take a recess? Just kidding. Commissioner Ocon, you're Allen though. You're both Allens, so at least I messed up the right names.
I'm Allen.
Could you please call the roll?
Sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Eggenberger is absent. Commissioner Foster?
Yes, here.
Ms. Nowsky?
Here.
Commissioner Ocon here. Commissioner Singh is not here. Commissioner Watkins?
Here.
Commissioner Weber?
Here.
And Chairwoman Zuber?
Here. Thank you very much, Commissioner Ocon. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda, staff? Oh, I forgot to introduce staff. We have our, what is your exact title again, Patrick?
Community Planner.
Community Planner, Patrick Sloan. We have, are you the Assistant Community Planner? Senior Planner, excuse me, okay. Aaron Schluto. And our Legal Counsel, Courtney, I'm testing my brain, Agrusso?
Agrusso.
Agrusso, thank you, okay. Very good, welcome, thank you. Do we have anything to add or delete from the agenda? I don't see Wendy's, so that's good.
Right, yes. They won't be back on until they're ready.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of notes for this evening. Commissioner Eggenberger had previously stated that she would not be in attendance this evening, and I just got an email from Commissioner saying he's on his way. He estimates about five minutes, so he's on his way.
Fabulous, thank you. But the agenda itself is fine?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion regarding the agenda this evening?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
All right, so we have a motion from Commissioner Weber and support from Commissioner Watkins. The W's are in control here. So anybody further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hey, excellent. Communications, this is really weird to just sit here with my finger on a button all night, but anyway. Do we have any, did we receive any communications since you sent out the packet?
No additional communications.
Awesome, okay, thank you. So we have item number one on our agenda this evening is Raising Canes. It is item number 040-SLU-7843. We're considering a special land use on parcel number 040990001703, also known as 44250 Ford Road. The property is located on the north side of Ford Road between Sheldon Road and Morton Taylor Road. The proposed use is for a fast food drive-through restaurant. Patrick, please tell us more.
Thank you. The project sponsor proposes to construct a 3,700 square foot, yes, yep. Okay. I'll try to, I'll try to speak up without being too loud. The project sponsor proposes to construct a 3,700 square foot drive-through restaurant at the site at the northeast corner of Sheldon Road and Ford Road, and it's at 44250 Ford Road. Currently, there's a TGI Fridays there. It's just east of the Walgreens and west of the Firestone, and south of the shopping center, the Harvard Square Shopping Center to the north. And the proposal is to demolish the existing restaurant and construct a fast food drive-through restaurant for a Raising Canes. The zoning district of the site is the C2 Community Commercial District with the Central Business District overlay, and fast food drive-through restaurants are special land uses in the C2 district, so they're subject to special land use approval and a public hearing. At the same time, the applicant has applied for site plan review, so the special land use plans are more detailed than a typical special land use plan would be because they're concurrently applying for site plan review. However, this evening, only the special land use is on the agenda. The site plan will be reviewed at a later meeting when some of the items that have been noted by staff have been addressed on the plans and there's fewer or no issues with the plans. So we'll have a little bit more of a detailed plan than a lot of special land uses to review this evening. The site is about 1.8 acres, and the surrounding zoning districts are also in the C2 district. Our major concerns or major questions that have gone along with the site are the impact on traffic. And most of the impacts relate to not just the traffic on the adjacent roadway system, but the impacts on traffic within the site itself. And the applicants have submitted a traffic impact study dated August 2023, and it studied the intersections of the Ford Road-Walgreens-Brookline Boulevard access, which is just in the southwest corner of the site. It studied Sheldon Road-Harvard Square and Coles Access, which is east of the site. This is the access that's directly across Coles, and if one's going across there to go to Target or Lowe's or BJ's, that's the, that's the access road that's typically taken. And the study also looked at the intersection of Sheldon and Ford Road. So the traffic study noted that there are currently some high control delays at two locations. The first is the northbound on Sheldon at Ford during the weekday midday peak hour, and that is specifically south of Ford on Sheldon going northbound. And the thought is that when the Ford Road Boulevard project is constructed, it's possible that that delay could go away, but we don't yet have the final plans and signalization timing for MDOT, so some of that is a little bit of an unknown. The other high control delay that's noted is eastbound from Coles at the access road that connects to Sheldon Road, and specifically, that's this eastbound as traffic is coming out of Coles and is adjacent to Sheldon and turning out onto Sheldon or going across the road all the way to the shopping center where the subject site is. This is an unsignaled intersection, and eastbound traffic, subject to the delay, has multiple options to reroute to Ford Road. So if someone's trying to get onto Sheldon Road quick, they'll, they'll use this, and at certain times, it will back up. But there's other ways out of the site along Ford Road, so if someone stacks up, or if they don't want to wait on Sheldon, they have the option to turn and go over to Ford Road as an alternative. The traffic study also notes that in 2029, the westbound drive from Harvard Square that aligns with the Coles Drive is expected to have a high control delay during weekday midday peak hour, and specifically, that's this drive here that's east of Sheldon. And the study notes that there should be consideration given to providing striping on that driveway to designate separate outbound right turn and left turn lanes, and westbound drivers on this access can alternatively drive northward to two other drives connecting Sheldon. So, and I've done this myself, if the lane here is stacked up, especially on a busy Saturday, and I want to go north on Sheldon, sometimes I'll take the parking lot, go all the way up to IHOP and go there. Or if I want to take a left, I won't chance it there, and I may go down to Ford or I may go up to Sheldon. So there's multiple ways in and out of the site based on the cross connections that have taken place over several decades. For the access management of the site itself, the, the site has the turn radii and travel path for a garbage truck and a fire truck. We do recommend that a loading truck be added to show the circulation, but we believe there will be sufficient area for a loading truck there if it can also hold a fire truck. One of our other access management concerns is the drive-through queuing plan, which shows stacking for 32 cars. The zoning ordinance requires 10 stacking spaces for drive-through restaurants, so the 32 stacking spaces on the site plan far exceed that. Our concern is that we're not aware of any other Raising Canes drive-through restaurants in southeast Michigan, and we're concerned that the restaurant has the potential to generate very high demand, being the only fast food restaurant for Raising Canes in the region. Therefore, we've recommended that the applicant propose an off-site auxiliary traffic management plan with the property owners to the north and/or west. It appears that Raising Canes, the property owner of the subject site also owns the parcels to the north and to the west, so it's possible that there can be a fairly easy management plan negotiated with adjacent parcels, provided there's no easements and provided that any negotiations with adjacent tenants can go smoothly. And since then, the applicants have emailed staff an auxiliary traffic management plan that I'll put up on the screen at the conclusion of our staff, staff report. Another item that we want to go over is some of the parking. Some of the parking areas we find are exceeding what we think the parking demand will be. We do think that the fast food drive-through portion of the site could generate high demand, but typically, the parking spaces don't generate as high a demand. And when the applicant accounts for the required parking for the outdoor dining area, the parking requirements go way up to 45 spaces. What we recommend doing is, in this Boulevard Island coming in from Ford Road, that's between the proposed Raising Canes and Walgreens, we recommend removing the proposed parking spaces out of this Boulevard Island and making this landscaping. First of all, we think that the parking would be excessive for the use, and also, if cars are backing in or backing out, then that could slow cross traffic and potentially cause backups in either direction. So we recommend the 36 parking spaces that are proposed on the site. If we exclude the outdoor dining from the parking calculations, then there's a maximum of 30, or a minimum of 30 parking spaces required. So we think that the 36 parking spaces that are proposed on the site are sufficient, and we recommend removing the parking spaces out of the Boulevard median. The next topics I'll go through fairly quickly. For the architecture, the submitted plans include elevation pages with material and color. The percentage of each material used has to be included on the plans, but the building far exceeds the 50% brick required by the zoning ordinance. So in terms of materials, the materials appear to meet the percentage standards of the zoning With landscaping, the applicants show a full landscape plan. There's a few minor details we're still working through with the applicants, but the landscape plan is pretty accurate in terms of what the final proposal will look like. For the sidewalk, there is an existing sidewalk along Ford Road, and the plan includes sidewalk connecting Ford to the building. Also, there's a crosswalk from the northwest corner of the site to the shopping center to the north, so there's going to be onsite sidewalk that will improve the pedestrian circulation. So looking at the site here, from Ford Road, there's going to be a sidewalk that goes all the way north to the north side of the property line. And looking at the, looking at the aerial map. I don't know how well this is going to show up, but on the aerial map right now, there's a sidewalk that terminates north of TGI Fridays, and then there's really nothing to go forward or go northward. And then also, you can't really see this with the lines, but at the shopping center here, at the southwest part of the building, there is a crosswalk where someone can go across, but once they go across the drive, there's a parking aisle in there with no ramp. So really, they, it's a crosswalk to nowhere. So what the proposal is, is to continue this sidewalk north and to put a real crosswalk here so that pedestrians can go northward and southward through that, and there's a stop-controlled intersection here. And then the final item to go over through our review letter is the special land use review standards. Most of the standards are met, and we find that all the standards could be met if the auxiliary traffic management plan is acceptable. But at this point, or at the point when we wrote the letter, there were a lot of questions about the off-site traffic management plan that have to be addressed before we can make affirmative findings on all the standards of Section 27.03(c) of the zoning ordinance. And the last thing I'll put up here on the screen is the traffic management plan that was received today from, from the applicants. So I'll turn this so that north is up. And so starting from bottom to top, here's Ford Road here at the bottom of the page, and then the drive here into Raising Canes. And so traffic will, will enter or exit from the, from the south. And then with the stacking onsite, this is the same stacking, the green and blue cars on the sheet are what's shown on the site plan. And what's different on this page is, I think there are 18 additional part, stacking spaces west of the site. And this is far north of the Walgreens, there's a landscape area, it's north of that. There's a parking lot there, but hardly anyone ever parks there. I think the reason those parking spaces exist is hard to meet a numerical standard, but they're not actually really used. So it's a good spot for auxiliary stacking. On the plan itself, the notes aren't legible at this scale, but the applicants will have either staff, or they say would hire off-duty police officers to help manage traffic on the site in terms of being able to move traffic when there's some waiting up here where the red cars are and having to get them through the stop-controlled intersection to stack up. That's if there is stacking beyond the, the 30-plus stacking spaces that are on the site. So this adds, I think it brings the total up to 50, where it would be available for auxiliary stacking. At first glance, really, our only concern is that if the number of cars start to exceed 50, or, and for some reason, despite their staff's best efforts, if there's just so much they can do to control the demand and people continue to come, one of our questions is whether they could go northward up this drive. And from, from the drive that connects to Sheldon right about here where that hand is, northward to the IHOP, I think there's roughly about 400 feet there. There's rarely any cars in this parking row, and this could be kind of like a third or a fourth level of stacking in the event that there were more than 50 cars. So we just got this planned today. We want to review it with our police department, we want to review it with our engineering division, just from a traffic management standpoint, to see if it's something that's workable and see if our police department has any additional comments. So this is something that the applicant's working on, something that I think we're making progress on, it just needs a little bit more time for staff review and additional comment. So with that, we recommend deferring action on the application pending receipt of additional information and review of that by staff. But we also recommend holding the public hearing, having a discussion on all the elements of the site, and deliberating on the application. So that concludes the staff report, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor here? You want to come up to the mic and add anything to what Patrick said? I figure you'll do that while he's getting up there.
He's your.
Okay.
And I'm also.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I move that we open the public hearing.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Ocon to open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, excellent. So please tell us your name, and you're the traffic guy.
Is it not working?
That mic is supposed to be hot all the time, so you should not have to touch the button.
Oh, okay, then maybe I was turning it off.
You might have.
My name is Tom Sefransky. I am the civil engineer for Raising Canes, I'm with Kim Lee Horn. And yes, I can speak further to the traffic. This is something Raising Canes takes very seriously. If their site isn't functioning well, it's not good for business, it's not good for the community, it's just not good all around. And so the, the reason this has played out a little bit, and this plan was just sent to Patrick this morning, is because it gets circulated through so many different departments at Raising Canes so that we can, everybody can make sure from all their different perspectives that it works for everybody. So that group is made up of the property development team, their legal team, restaurant excellence, their risk committee, and others. And so this is something, you know, with, with the auxiliary plan, we can show 50 cars stacked. Raising Canes is, I believe they're number one in terms of how quickly they can serve customers, and so on average, it's only 2 minutes and 30 seconds from the time somebody places their order at a menu board to when they're driving away with their food. This is mainly in part to a limited menu. It's chicken fingers, coleslaw, french fries, and Texas toast. I believe there's only four menu items you could choose from, but all of them are just those items. And so as soon as they, they have cameras on the drive-through and in the parking lot, so on, on, an everyday occurrence as people pull into the site, they know what they're going to start cooking, and so they start cooking to help expedite the turnaround time. In addition to that, there, it's, there's never a one-size-fits-all formulaic answer to, you know, what might happen during their grand opening peak periods. And so the, the plan that we had submitted is what we think would be the best option, but if there are more or less cars, Raising Canes would be dynamic in their approach and modify their approach to make sure that the site is functioning properly. As noted in the staff report, they've hired off-duty police officers in many municipalities if it's been warranted. Otherwise, they could use crew members or other off-duty or security companies that might be able to help direct traffic if warranted. They use cones to help direct traffic, temporary signage. If, for example, we were to do the off-site stacking, some temporary signage can be placed to navigate customers to the end of that line. So this is something that they take very seriously, and it's, it's something that they will make sure works well and functions if there's a big draw during the grand opening.
I have a question. From the, the drawings that you, you submitted with the colored cars on them, the blue and green ones anyway, it looked to me like the 32 stacking cars is for your grand opening, is what they anticipate, that apparently they would serve people further up the line. So normally, those six cars that are green would not be counted as part of the stacking, is that correct?
So, yeah, so the green cars, I would say in a normal peak lunch hour or dinner hour outside of the grand opening period, they would not normally have cars pulled forward ahead of the pickup window. So that is just one way they help fit extra cars within their designated drive-through area in those abnormal periods.
And I'm not familiar with, with Raising Canes. Does, there, there's a person who has to actually go to the window and grab the food for the outer car?
Yeah, so they use both lanes, and typically, if there's two to three cars consistently stacked at both menu boards, that's when they'll send out a crew member who has a tablet, and they start taking orders before somebody gets to the menu board, just to give the kitchen that much more time to fulfill the order. Through those tablets, they could also accept the payment, and then, yes, for any cars that are in that outer lane, crew members would be utilizing that center striped drive aisle to walk orders out to the cars.
Great, thank you. Did anybody else have anything to add from the corporate?
My name is Crystal Farrell, and I am the property development consultant. I just helped to manage the team and the schedule and the process through, through entitlements to permits till we handed it over to construction. I will, just for time management, I'm going to, I could talk for an hour about Raising Canes. They're a great and amazing company. I'm going to give you the Cliff Notes real quick, because you said you didn't know anything about Canes. They, the founder, Todd Graves, opened in 1996, and there's just one owner. There are some franchise locations, but those are in Alaska and Hawaii. So in the United States, Todd, Todd's the owner. He really focuses on community, so one of their main points of mission is to give back to the community. So if, and I've actually done this as a football mom, you go to their website, and for any fundraiser, any group, any activity, you just submit an inquiry, it goes to the closest Raising Canes, and they'll get back to you. I had an email, and the guy didn't know I had anything to do with Raising Canes, I didn't tell him, it was, it was a test. But they got right back to me, donated tons of stuff for football boys. They want to give back to the community. There's only two things that they don't give back to, and it's, and I support this fully, it's politics and kill shelters. Any, anything that, that, they're huge advocates of animals, because Kane is, was his, is his But they support, not only, they support small business, animals, they feed the hungry, they support schools, educational, it's just, they love to be engaged in the community. As Tom was saying, they take every, it's so strategic, it's very impressive. The 2.5 minutes from order to receiving your food is because this is something that they focus on, they work on. Like he said, when they see you pull in, they say, "drop chicken," and it's always going to be fresh. They don't even have, they have fresh tenders delivered, the chicken is never frozen. It's not frozen before it got to the store, it's not going to be frozen there. They marinate it, they make coleslaw fresh every day, their lemonade, their tea, their lemonade is three ingredients, it's lemons, water, and sugar, cane sugar. So their commitment to quality is like second to none. Skipping through here so as to make sure I don't talk for an hour. We have, that in a nutshell is the Raising Canes story. The quality is their most important attribute of the restaurant. They want to make sure it's top quality, the timing, their commitment to the community, all of this. It's a really great company, and we're really excited to be in your community. And what other questions do you have for me, just on the Raising Canes?
I think you've answered a lot of questions, thank you.
Okay.
I think if anybody has any, we'll ask you to come back up, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thanks.
Shall we start with Commissioner Watkins today? Sorry, you're right. Need to take public comment, I'm sorry. Does anyone from the audience want to make a comment about this, or have anything to ask or say? All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, awesome. Now we'll start with Commissioner Watkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you guys hear me? Thank you so much. So really quickly, this may be for the civil engineer, I'm not sure, or even, I don't know if there are any design folks that are in the audience, but I'm looking at the, at the, the west and north side of the, of the parcel. Just a few concerns, and they're general in nature. Number one, just from a personal standpoint, looking at, you know, its proximity to Walgreens, it's a full redesign. I'm concerned about, there's a sidewalk that goes from the, from the very south of the site, you know, to the north, and it goes nowhere, I think, is what I'm seeing there. And I wanted to kind of be sure about what that's doing, especially as it relates to cars. When you start to talk about queuing 20, 30 cars, it just seems like a lot. We've all seen it, we've seen it work well in other instances, but it's a ton of traffic. It's more than, it's an extreme amount of traffic in a parcel that is right now not developed with, with Fridays that's on the, on that site. But now it'll go from underdeveloped with plenty of parking to now very, very dense, very, very dense. And my concerns lie in the actual parcel and being able to conduct business in the best way possible for Raising, at the, I didn't hold the button, did I? At the, maybe it shuts me off after a while, at the corner of Ford and Sheldon, the adjoining Harvard Square and notwithstanding what's to the, to the east, sharing a lot of common area, I, I think there's a long way to go on this. And, and let me go back to my question. My question was, among all these other things, there's a sidewalk that starts from the, the south of the property that goes nowhere to me. I just want to kind of get some, some, some response to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I can go over some of the sidewalk, kind of look at what we have today in terms of the sidewalk and some of the issues. So right now, from, from Ford Road, there's an existing sidewalk where a pedestrian can go northward and then into the site at TGI Fridays. and then into the site at TGI Fridays. And then there's a sidewalk alongside the west side of TGI Fridays. And then it goes northwest of the building until it gets to the parking lot, and then it opens up. And then opposite that, if we go farther north, so this, this is the Crave Barbecue site here on the south side of the building. And they have a sidewalk, and then they have a crosswalk that goes across the stop-controlled intersection. But then, once somebody crosses that, they hit the landscape island. So there's a disconnect right now with where the sidewalks go. What the applicant is proposing is alongside the west side of the site, this sidewalk would continue. I think they'd be rebuilding the sidewalk. And then they would run the sidewalk northward to the north side of the site and then put in a ramp on the, on the north side of their site that would go to that stop-controlled intersection. So on the aerial photo, it would be right about, pretty close to where this one terminates here at the landscape island.
Thank you. I had that question too because the drawings don't show a crosswalk there. But you said that there would be a crosswalk there, so I'm glad you pointed out that there sort of is one now. Thank you. Okay, excellent. All right, Commissioner Singh?
A question again for the traffic guy. Based upon the previous sites, you guys run in multiple states, what's the average kind of a traffic in a city like Canton on an average? I know in the beginning it may be more, but we are always concerned about Ford Road and traffic, and what's, what's your take on average traffic?
So I can speak to, I guess, two different parts of that. In general, the drive-through, we've done several studies. I specifically work on all of the Raising Cane's sites in Michigan and Chicago, the Chicagoland area. So in the Chicagoland area, we've done several studies over the past few years, and this might not be 100% accurate, but I want to say the peak drive-through stacking that we found on an average day, we tested both the weekdays and a Saturday, was 24 or 26 cars at the peak. And so on this site, those cars would fit within the designated drive-through area. And then we did do a traffic study specific for this site, which projected trips on the weekday, midday peak, weekday, like dinnertime PM peak, and then Saturday midday peaks. And in general, for quick-serve restaurants, 55% of the trips generated by that site are what they call pass-by trips. So that's people going to Lowe's or Kohl's that are already on the road, and they happen to stop by, Raising Cane's in this case, on their way. So the remaining trips would be identified as primary trips, that people going from their house to Raising Cane's or something like that. So on average, so the report, we have weekday midday peak, a total of 75 trips. But that's a total of inbound and outbound, so any cars that go would come and leave. So between 35 and 40 people, I guess, would be coming to the site. Weekday PM peak was around 30. And then Saturday midday peak was around 50. And again, about half of those, a little over half, is people that are already on the roads going to nearby businesses.
Can I, can I ask a follow-up question to that? Because I had a similar question only about parking on the site. Do you, have you looked at the parking requirements at other locations? And do you think that reducing the parking, like Patrick suggested, is sufficient?
I do, yeah. I, I want to say it was around the same numbers that we saw at the drive-through peak, where it was like 24 to 26 at the, at the few sites that we studied over the past couple of years in the Chicagoland area.
Thank you. Use your mic.
Is it the same context is here? So you're talking 26 was a peak at the drive-through? Was it the same number, 50 per hour coming in and out? So the proportions would be the same?
I am not 100% sure. I want to say it will be similar. A lot of this data is, is based on building size. And so along with the traffic numbers on the streets, I would have to double-check on that. I will say on those, the sites that I had mentioned, they were slightly older drive-through models where they weren't two lanes all the way through. And some of the, the recent data, I guess, that Raising Cane's has collected over the past three years since COVID and the up, the upflow, I guess, in drive-through usage, Raising Cane's has implemented much more site design and other factors that help actually increase the efficiency of the site. So I would, I would say this could function even better than the sites in terms of drive-through efficiency than the ones that we had studied in the Chicagoland area.
Mr. Singh, did you have anything else?
Yeah, another, just a follow-up question. Do you have experience with any other site where you guys have conducted stacking of traffic separated, like what you're proposing here? Have you ever done that before in any of the other sites?
Yes, Raising Cane's has in country, or cities across the country, they have during the grand opening seen a draw, a large draw to the site. And so this is something that regardless of whether municipalities are asking about it early on, in this case, it's something that they're always thinking about and planning for. In the event that it were to happen, then they have a plan that's in place and able to be implemented.
To that part, we are just planning for the grand opening timeframe?
Yeah, I would say beyond kind of that grand opening buzz, Raising Cane's does not plan to have 100 cars stacked out there every day. That's not what's anticipated here.
All right, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Conne?
Thank you. I think overall, I think the site lays out really nice. I think it's pretty clean. I know, Patrick, you mentioned about eliminating some of those parking spots to the west, but I mean, if I did a quick count on the seats on the inside and patio, I mean, we're talking 90-some seats. At worst case, I think that would be a good place for the employees to park. I would just kind of hesitate of just chopping those off and just eliminate them. I think there's a lot of, if they're planning on having 90 seats, I think there's going to be a lot of people inside. But other than that, I think it looks great.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Weber?
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. I would agree that generally, I like the, I like the use. The building itself looks nice. My biggest concern is, I think, most people here is our traffic-related. Patrick, I do have a question. If you go to the aerial of the site, it shows the outline of the, of the property. So the northern boundary of the property cuts into that roadway. And as you can see, it's curved there, and is that going to become a choke point for traffic going through that, that road if they develop this property all the way back to that boundary line? Man, there's obviously lots of width right there now because there's nothing there in that parking area. But you cut it down. If you get delivery trucks through there, plus cars, and it does get used a lot, I'd be concerned that we lose the safe passage between, for cars coming and going through that roadway. One observation. The other part, I personally don't have a problem with eliminating those parking spots on the west side. I think the idea that they'll have that many people sitting inside, I don't, I don't think it'd be a problem. One question I do have for the applicant is, where is your nearest restaurant to this location?
I think Lansing is what I heard, yeah.
East Lansing? Is it parcels that you've developed on, are they pretty comparable in size to this? Are they generally bigger? Are they? I just ask because of the stacking of cars issue.
Could you please go to the mic? I'm sorry. We record these, and they'll be on TV.
I'm going off memory here, but I believe the East Lansing site is a walk-up. It doesn't, it's not a drive-through restaurant. I believe it's on campus, and so there's, it's not our typical site. I would say, though, for all the other Raising Cane's sites that I work on, they are generally one and a half to two acres.
So let me go back to my previous question. Where is your nearest drive-up restaurant to here?
The nearest one that we saw was in Toledo. I didn't see any existing ones in southeast Michigan, but that was just a Google search from staff.
I have a planning commission road trip this weekend.
Patrick, can we get, can we get the bus for the week?
I can ask facilities.
Okay. So my, my biggest concern is, I look at the traffic flow. I'm not, yes, stacking is a concern. I presume that the auxiliary stacking, I think you're probably right, we'll probably see use for that mostly when you have a grand opening. I don't know if Raising Cane's experiences the same kind of backup as a Chick-fil-A. And I know, I know, for example, the Chick-fil-A in Novi, well, the one in Northville, too, they're still busy to this day. The one in Novi at 12 Oaks Mall still backs up into the, the traffic circle around the mall. I don't know if you guys experience that kind of traffic flow or not. And that, and that Chick-fil-A has been open five years or so. So the concern, if you routinely experience that kind of backup, I would hate to see this parking lot, and I know there's a lot of space there now, but I would hate to see that pass-through and all that get jammed up like that. And then my only other concern is, when you go out after getting your food, cars turning out into the driveway there to go onto Ford Road, if cars are going out there and also coming in there, I just worry a little bit about the, the flow coming in and out. But I don't know how you avoid that. I got to be fair to you. I didn't read your traffic impact study that much, at least as far as the Ford Road and Sheldon Road, just because I think, partly because, hopefully in a couple of years, it's going to be obsolete. So I'm not too concerned about that. I'm more worried about the on-property traffic management. So I think it is important that you continue to kind of fine-tune that, that, that flow and that, that, that stacking. And if there's something, Patrick, that can be done to look into that roadway to the north, just to make sure as that gets designed that that doesn't get narrowed down any more than, than necessary.
Yeah, I've got that here in my notes as a follow-up item.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Foster?
Thank you. I generally think this is a good plan and a good proposal. Agree with what Commissioner O'Conne stated. But I will say that I don't have an issue with getting rid of some of those parking spots. I'm always going to be in favor of getting rid of some of those parking spots. But I do, I am concerned about the traffic and would be interested to hear what public safety has to say about the stacking. So once we have those answers, I would be interested in that. The other thing is, I was looking at the project narrative, and I think this is a question for another meeting, but just curious about the hours of operation until 2:00 AM during the week and 3:30 AM on the weekend. So just wondered if that's the same as, you know, other locations? If you had any issues or if you've had any research done in Canton, if that's something that our community would warrant? I just don't see a lot of people out and about at that time, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Foster.
Can you pull up the aerial of like Ford Road? So one of my concerns, I did not read through the traffic study completely, but the left turn in eastbound. So right now, there isn't an issue because there's no Fridays. But that has a potential of backing up. Someone trying to get in the left-turn lane to go in is going to battle with the left-turn movements coming westbound. See where the brake is right there? So that's a potential issue. I don't know if your traffic study studied that particular movement.
I've, I've seen a couple of almost accidents there, even without Fridays.
So you can picture a fast-food restaurant introducing more traffic at that point. That's going to be an issue. It's just something to, to study and look at a little further. Also, I recommend that you submit an overall plan that shows a zoom out of all the entrances and access points with the adjacent properties. So we can see like the sidewalk connections, things like that. Just like an overall plan. Can we go back to the site plan? So the entrance, like Doug said, is going to be an issue because someone exiting the drive-through, they're going to have to make that quick, they're going to have to cross the traffic in a busy section and get over to this far lane. So that's going to be a tough movement. And people coming off Ford Road, they're, that's a, that's a quick. You know, they have to recognize that there's somebody there that could back up Ford Road. You know, I just looked at your Raising Cane's in Toledo. They actually have a one-way in from the main roadway, and then the exit at the other side. So it's a longer movement where the drive-through would have to circle back around, and then you're dumping traffic, you know, into the site, and they'd have to loop around. But it could potentially solve that conflict point. Something to look at, you know? I don't want to design it for you, but it's something to look at. It looks like the Toledo one has the same issue. The, the approach is so close, so they made it a one-way in. And then can you zoom to the northeast? So that northeast is another conflict point where somebody coming in from that development wants to go through the drive-through, they're going to, they're going to battle with the people coming northbound. So somebody could get stuck right there, and you're going to, and then they would back up into the drive lane, you know? I don't know how long that stacking's going to be, if there's going to be someone, you know, if those cars are going to be in the drive or if that stacking is predicted to be at that point only. I'm not, I don't know that. But that could be a potential conflict issue.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess the, it's not anticipated that the drive-through would be full as shown here. This is more just to represent how many cars can in fact fit there, with the exception of potentially the grand opening if there is a major draw here. And the idea there was to place either a crew member or somebody directing traffic right at that location you're talking about, as well as at what's off the screen down here, so that they can prevent that battle or somebody cutting into the drive-through. So that was the idea of posting up two people to help manage the traffic so that they can funnel people from the off-site stacking area here without that battle. And then going back to one of your previous points regarding the Ford Road left-in movement, MDOT is? MDOT is planning to put a center median down Ford Road, and so as soon as those improvements are constructed, people will not be able to make left turns into this site.
Yeah, that might be five years from now.
Okay.
We've been talking about it for a long time.
I've been trying to get schedules from them too, and I haven't been lucky.
So if this site goes online, it needs to function properly without those improvements, in other words. That does bring up, I'm not understanding this proposed state right-of-way line. That's the proposed MDOT Ford right-of-way line? And is that the proposed edge of pavement that's like three or four feet from your drive? Is that right?
It is. So they're proposing a turnaround.
Awfully close.
The proposed right-of-way line is not where their pavement would be, that's just where the new state property would end. That's the additional land that they're taking.
What is that line then? That's closest to your drive, that's kind of thicker and shaded? Yeah, that one right there. What is that?
That appears to be a proposed property boundary because they're pulling setbacks from there. The applicants, they have been coordinating with MDOT, and this is where there's a proposed turning loon for trucks where the proposed right-of-way goes farther inward of the site. And again, these are proposed designs, they're not finalized, but those thick black lines here, I think that's the proposed parking, or not proposed parking, but proposed property line. And then the edge of pavement is several feet in alongside here. So there would, based on these, there would be a little bit of green space, some area to fit sidewalk in, just final designs haven't been completed yet.
Okay. That was my concern, that you're so close to the new roadway that we didn't think that out, you know what I mean? So I would try to get those MDOT plans and try to piece that in as best we can, just to see where they're.
These are their plans. These are the CAD files that we've received from MDOT.
Then it should be clear where the edge of pavement is going to be.
Yeah, it's, it's. That out. The black line, which has the two short dashes and then the longer dash, that is their proposed state right-of-way. I believe if you were talking about the shaded bold line towards our property from there, I believe that's what they told us was like a grading line. So essentially, if they're going to be regrading all of their street, that's essentially going to be their proposed easement to regrade on our site, just to tie back to existing. So there is quite a bit of space. If I'm eyeballing it, I would say there's more than 20 feet between what will be the Ford Road turnaround loon and our proposed pavement.
I think it just needs to be shown a little bit clearer, maybe with labels on future submissions. Can you zoom out a little? This, there's an exit at the drive-through. What is the purpose of that right there? Just if someone changes their mind?
Yeah, that's what we call like an escape lane or emergency escape. So if somebody pulls in and they're sick of waiting, or they forgot their wallet, or they get a call and need to leave, that's one option for them to leave before they continue further into the site. It's not intended to be heavily trafficked, it's just kind of a.
Okay. So that's for one vehicle to exit?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. Maybe skinning it up, I mean, would discourage somebody from entering that because the geometrics are, I can turn in even though that, you know, I could be drunk going in at 3:00 in the morning in Canton.
Anything else, Commissioner Cruz?
So the adjacent property owners are all owned by the same person, is that right?
According to what we've been able to find, we haven't gone through the assessing records, but looking at, see if I can zoom in, there's, the more I zoom in, the more it goes back. But Harvard Square Holdings, it's the same owner of the subject property, the property to the west, which has Walgreens, and then I'll zoom out even more. And the property to the north, it's a much larger one, has the shopping center with great barbecue and the rest of the sites, or the rest of the stores there. So assuming the information on the map is correct, where it's the same ownership entity for the three parcels, then with stacking and auxiliary traffic management, we think there's a better opportunity if it's just negotiating with one property owner.
So I recommend that you get an agreement in place for access because if that owner decides to sell off one of those pieces, he can cut off access to your site, just so that it carries with the property.
I believe there is cross-access agreements already in place throughout the entire shopping center.
I got one last thing. Eliminating those spaces, can we go back to the site plan? You know, I'm always for eliminating parking, but I think it should be based on some scientific calculation. I mean, parking is usually based on occupancy or square footage of building. So if we're going to eliminate parking spaces, we should have some proof by the applicant that a comparable site has functioned with this many spaces in another location. Not just, I want to eliminate parking because I want more green space, you know? So there should be some proof that it would work without those spaces.
But the applicant's not asking to remove this parking. It's the township asking to remove the parking.
Well, it's still a variance from our ordinance, is that correct?
It is, but I think we've based all of our parking requirements in this township on square footage and occupancy, and look at the overabundance of parking we have in this township. I mean, we're building buildings now and parking lots that were overbuilt.
And there's plenty of parking behind. Is that parking by ordinance? That required by ordinance?
Yeah, and the reason it's shown as the number of spaces there is if it was just on the indoor dining itself and the square footage and the number of employees, there would be 30 spaces required. Because there's a large outdoor dining area in the southeast corner, that adds a number of seats there, which kicks the parking requirement way up because I think it's one space per 50 square foot of dining area when we look at that standard. And so the number of parking spaces required jumps to 45. And so that's why the additional spaces within this boulevard are added. What we're recommending is that we not include calculating the parking for the outdoor dining area. I think for, you know, at least half the year, it would be, it wouldn't be used. And with a limited type of menu, if people are eating inside, I don't know how long they'll actually be there. So if we didn't include the outdoor dining as part of the parking requirement, then the number of spaces would go down to 30 required spaces. And then the applicant's proposed 36 spaces on the site, so there would be a few more in addition to what is required for the building.
Okay. Yeah, that was just my concern, that if we're varying from the ordinance, it should still fit with the demand of your site. And if you guys are in agreement, I'm all for it.
Anything else? All right, Commissioner Janowski?
I think everybody answered everything for me. I would like to see more specifics in regards to a more scientific approach about what the volume will actually be. In the traffic studies, we got, you're at, I think your peak on Saturday would be 105 in. And looking at that, your queue would be too short with the amount of vehicles you'd have. You'd be like two vehicles short in that queue line you got, given the two and a half minutes serving time? So more accurate prediction on that, I know statistically you could take that in. That would make people feel more comfortable because there's been problems with the queues and parking before, and it looks like you guys are getting better at it. But another thing I do support, like with the rest of my team, eliminating extra additional parking spots if we can. That's it. Thank you.
Just one quick comment on that. I believe the traffic for the peak trips that you noted on Saturday, 105 is that what you had mentioned? I believe that's split, that's the combination of trips in and out. So of the 105, that would be more like 50 cars or 55 cars if we're rounding to fives? Oh, it does? Okay. Okay. I must have been looking at the run. Okay. Yeah, we can look at getting those more synced up. Some of those would be dine-in, and so they'd use the parking, but we can reevaluate it. Right. Yeah, it's, we certainly dial that in. I think it's just the kind of the grand opening peak, that's when it's, every site is unique and it's, all we can do is have a plan in place with some different variables to consider, you know, get to a worst-case scenario. Sure. Yeah. Right. Definitely. Sure. And on the Chick-fil-A comment, and I can't speak directly to their business, but the Raising Cane's limited menu really does help speed things up. You know, there's not a variety of 100 different items or combinations of things you can get. So they do truly move quick and they're industry leader on the drive-through side. So obviously, the hope is that it wouldn't be that bad. But I think there are some different factors to the businesses that could lead to different results.
Sure. Yeah, two and a half minutes is good, but that's the number I use to start calculating everything, so.
All right. And then I had a couple of questions to your comments. I agree with most of the commissioners who, most of the commissioners, comma, who have noted that the additional parking is probably not needed, that additional 11 spaces there and that it is, it's just in an awkward place because people do zoom through there in and out of the space behind, the parking lot behind. Commissioner Cruz, I think you made a very good point about that turning, turning right out of the drive-through line and going, trying to get out onto Ford Road, especially westbound Ford Road there. That is, that's just a tight, that's a very tight little area there, and it might cause problems if somebody pulls out in front of somebody pulling in from Ford Road and we have an accident or something there. I do like seeing the left or the right turn arrow on the pavement, just off the bottom of our drawing, or off the bottom of the screen there, because I don't know how many times I've seen somebody taking a left out of that. Yeah, thank you. A left turn out of that parking lot and, you know, three out of the five westbound lanes stop, but the center turn lane, somebody's coming up to the light, like maybe me, and they're letting traffic out that's trying to merge into that turn lane, which isn't a merge lane, it's a turn lane, but whatever. So I like having that marked as a right turn only, even before the Boulevard project. I think that's good. One concern I have, you know, speaking to the 11 parking spaces, there's plenty of parking elsewhere on the site that I think somebody could park it on the, you know, outer edges of the Lowe's parking lot and walk over, or behind Walgreens, or, you know, in the shopping center across the back. So I don't, I'm not concerned about that. One other thought I have that nobody's brought up is the, that driving through from Sheldon Road back to go to Lowe's, right where that sign is there, I find that, that entrance area there with the, just the pavement markings to be a little bit dangerous. Like even though there's the pavement markings there to tell you that the road curves and that there's a stop sign, to me, that seems like, that seems like there's a potential for a lot of confusion there and accidents. And I would love to see the property owner install some islands in there, some landscape islands, to help delineate that road through there and make it a little bit safer. That's just, that's my personal opinion, especially in the winter when we have snow on the ground and you can't see those painted markings. It seems like that would make things a lot safer back there. I've seen people drive straight across that curve, and I've seen people blow through those stop signs because there's really no delineation of that intersection, other than those white lines on the pavement and then a few little stop signs sticking up. So it seems to me that it would be safer if we had some landscaping delineating that space, plus that would be more trees and green space, which I like. So that would be my feedback. Yeah, put your, yeah, absolutely. Put your mic on though. Yeah.
So I'm looking at your site in Toledo, and I know Commissioner Cruz touched on this briefly, but I'm looking at, I'm looking at the aerial of it, and I see, we've brought up the whole turning motion out of the drive-through into the driveway onto Ford Road. It looks like your location in Toledo has a similar issue, but instead of allowing cars to turn right out into that drive, you make them all turn left to go back around the property and come out one way on the other side of the property, which to me would eliminate that dangerous turning motion right there at the entrance off of Ford Road. Patrick, I don't know if you can.
Almost like he knew we were going to go there. Looks like there's a little more width on the, you know, it's not such a long, narrow lot, so it might be challenging, but.
And I'll note too, that this parcel looks smaller than the parcel that you're dealing with here in Canton. And the stacking, I don't know if the stacking's an issue there or not, but I definitely like that, that motion to exit better than what you've got, what you're showing here right now.
Commissioner Janowski, please use your mic because folks at home won't know what you're saying.
It's just pushing it back from the entranceway on the one side so that you have more of a buffer and more, yep, right in that area there. So you're further back from the main road. And then the same thing at the backside, there was also speak of having the same problem where you're right on the main road and you don't have a buffer. I don't, this one here has like a trail off of it, so it'd have to be something similar. You have to, you just have to have two buffers with, I don't know, whatever, two, three-car width, so 60, 60, 70 feet.
Commission, anybody else have any final thoughts or want to make a motion? Got the dramatic motion reader is here this evening, so. I mean, we can have anyone make one if you're ready.
We're good. So I'll move that, if I may, Madam Chair, I'll move to defer action on the special lane use application for a fast-food drive-through restaurant at 44250 Ford Road, parcel number 040-99-0001-703, pending receipt of revised plans and auxiliary traffic management plan that addresses the information noted by staff in its review letter to the Planning Commission.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Singh. Any further discussion?
Did we include comment to say information noted by the staff in its review letter to the Planning Commission, as well as comments made by the Planning Commission?
Might want to be specific about which comments.
Specifically about the traffic, the traffic management plan on the overall property, not just the auxiliary traffic management.
Can I be in the motion to include all items as discussed relative to traffic as submitted and to be submitted? Can I be in the motion to include all items as discussed relative to traffic as submitted and to be submitted within the framework of the motion? Because I'll consult our legal to make sure that I did that in the right way.
Yes, I believe so. Yes.
Awesome. Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, one, one final thing, and this is probably to, to Patrick. And I, I think again, I'm just an ag�al state guy, looking back to the site owner, the southern entrance exit, um, I know a guy who's probably made that left turn. I won't say who he is. So is there an opportunity, matter of fact, I'm not even sure if the signage is still up that demands the left, the right-hand turn only. And I'm thinking in my mind, have I seen it in the last six months? Maybe it's there, maybe it's not. But at the same time, to improve the development, to have the concrete turnout, only go right turn only, right? Uh, and the, and the ingress to be off of Ford Road to, to meet same. So I think, I don't know if that's the responsibility of the property owner. We can suggest slash twist arms to, to make that happen along with the, the island improvements further into the site from the Sheldon entrance ingress egress. Uh, that was talked about by, by Commissioner Weber. So I think there are a couple of things that would make this, this design, I'm all for having the, the restaurant there, but I think when we start to think about the things that we discussed over this half hour, these improvements, these ancillary infrastructure improvements will make this a much better development based upon the things that we talked about today, specifically those two things.
Commissioner Watkins, I wasn't clear. Are you suggesting that they, they change that meet, that island at the entrance? So that it's more, it, it's really almost forcing you to make a right turn?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
There's a technical term for that. It's called a pork chop.
Oh, thank you. It's like a loon. We have loons and pork chops.
Forces you to make the right only. The geometrics would be better to do the pork chop. That way you don't really need that arrow, you know.
Kind of, isn't it already shaped that way? I thought it wa, I thought, I thought, I thought it was.
Well, I talked to the guy who's made that left turn and he says no.
Does he look at you when you look in the mirror?
Never.
Okay.
Wow, ju, just, just.
Reverse pork chop.
And truthfully, that's kind of an, that's kind of an issue all along Ford Road with people trying to make left turns out of businesses on, on Ford Road. But that's a different topic for a different day.
That's a topic for a whole day. Okay, so we have a motion and support. Any, I'm, well, I'm not even gonna ask. We've had a lot of discussions.
Actually still need support for the amended motion.
I, we had that.
Commissioner Singh, I think, yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Singh supported the, the amended motion, just like he supported the first one. Thank you. Let the, let the record reflect. So Commissioner Okon, would you please call the vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
So the, the yes is to support deferring, is that correct? Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Okon, yes. Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Chairwoman Zuber?
Yes.
I guess I'm supposed to say something then. Yes. So thank you very much and we'll, we'll look forward to the amended information. Thank you.
The public meeting, so you have to use, you have, it's, we have to have public.
With regard to if they wanted to change that, that entrance, would that have to, would that have to go through MDOT? Since that's going through out to Ford Road?
Yeah, it would. Right about where this red line is where the cursor goes over, that's where the public right-of-way is. So anything to take place if, if we follow the cursor to kind of draw in some kind of a pork chop to keep that right in only, that would have to be subject to MDOT review. So we can talk to MDOT about that and we'll see what they say. Their, their response may be nothing until the Boulevard gets done because anything they do in the right-of-way will be pursuant to the Boulevard design. But we'll definitely have that conversation and we'll have that discussion with, with the plans and the suggestion.
Just a note of caution on other projects I've dealt with. Even though on these projects I've dealt with where we didn't touch the MDOT right-of-way, because of the change in use or the ta, the change of intensity, MDOT made us get a permit for that project even though I didn't touch the right-of-way. So it's a good idea to interact with MDOT in regards to the design. And I'm sure Murky would probably, you know, make, uh, require that anyways.
Yeah, the information on the plan showing that loon, that was information that the applicants had obtained from MDOT through that plan submittal. So anything that's changed in the future and any follow-ups that affect MDOT, we'll be sharing that with MDOT just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Excellent. Thank you all and good luck. Yeah. All right. We neglected to approve the minutes from last, our last meeting. That is actually not on the agenda, so I didn't even think about it. So I guess I'd like to, to move back to the minutes and see if anybody had any, any comments or wants to make a motion.
I moved to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
All right. All right. Awesome. That was quick. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. Commissioner Okon, could you call the vote?
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Okon, yes. Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Zuber?
Yes. And sorry I made you do a voice, a voice vote for something that we really didn't need a voice vote for. Sorry. But anyway, you probably enjoyed it. Because he doesn't get enough talking time. All right. So we have, uh, item number two is our mobile gas station and convenience store. We're considering a site plan for parcel number 002-99-0002-707, also known as 8773 Hagerty Road. This property is located at the southwest corner of North Hagerty Road and Joy Road. Proposed use is the redevelopment of an automobile filling station and convenience store. All right. Patrick, could you please tell us more?
Sure. Thank you. Um, the proposal to reconstruct the gas station at the southwest corner of Hagerty and Joy Road. This was first reviewed by the planning commission at the July 10th meeting a couple of months ago. And that meeting was for the special land use only. And at that meeting, the planning commission recommended approval of the special land use subject to conditions, including obtaining variances based on the plan design. And based on the plan designs that were, that were reviewed at the July 10th meeting, the zoning board of appeals approved the requested variances on August 10th of 2023. So based on the designs reviewed by the planning commission recommended for approval, uh, the variances associated with those designs were approved by the zoning board of appeals. So the next step in the special land use process would be for those plans to be considered by the township board. We haven't had the plan sent to the township board yet due to some recent plan changes to make the convenience store actually smaller. And so the, um, the major plan changes are to modify the convenience store that instead of the applicant demolishing the current convenience store and rebuilding a new convenience store of 6,000 square feet, which was proposed on the July 10th plans that were recommended for approval. Instead, the applicant proposes to construct an addition onto the existing convenience store. And therefore it'll be a much smaller convenience store. Uh, but there are a few circulation changes and site changes that result. And I'll bring up the, I'll bring up the plans here. So this is just the site here on the, on the aerial. Head to the major site plan. All right. So here's the, here's the site plan and north is on the right side of the page. And so there's the existing convenience store here that's top of the page on the west side of the site. And what the applicants propose to do is to put an addition onto the existing convenience store and make it wider. The, the circulation changes are in the, the middle driveways right here. That's south of the proposed convenience store, south of the existing gas pumps. Uh, this, uh, this drive area has been shifted southward a little bit to make the access better. So if you recall at the July 10th meeting, uh, this western middle access off of Old Hagerty Road was proposed to be angled and the planning commission recommended that that be straightened to 90 degrees. So that's reflected on the revised plan. So there's a 90-degree turn from Old Hagerty to North Hagerty. And so there's, there's no more angle. It's just the straight 90 degrees. And it's located farther south of the existing gas pump. So there's a little bit more stacking space from this southern drive into the pump area. If that's where drivers are coming from. Um, and it accounts for circulation south of the convenience store addition. By making the changes, uh, there are a couple additional variances that the applicant would have to go back to the zoning board of appeals for. Uh, the first is by adding on to the existing convenience store. Um, this addition is farther within the required setback from Old Hagerty Road. So because this is a new setback encroachment, uh, this would have to go to the zoning board of appeals for review. Also, uh, there's a new area for the dumpster enclosure. It's southwest of the proposed building addition. And dumpster enclosures have to be located in a side or rear yard. This is technically within the front yard area adjacent to Old Hagerty Road. Uh, so to locate the dumpster area in this location, the applicants would have to apply to the zoning board of appeals for a variance. Um, so some of the things that would make this a little bit better and supportive of a variance request is there are three front yards along North Hagerty, along Joy Road and along, along Old Hagerty Road. So three front yards oftentimes creates a practical difficulty. And if there were to be a structure located in any of the front yards, the front yard adjacent to Old Hagerty Road on the west is the least impactful because it only serves two or three other sites and they're industrial sites. So Old Hagerty Road here to the west is a very lightly traveled road. And finally, with the site design changes, um, there had, there have been no changes to the gasoline pump canopy. That's proposed to remain the same. And there are no changes to the previously reviewed diesel pump canopy that was reviewed at the July 10th meeting. Uh, the parking spaces on the north side of the site will remain as they were previously proposed. And with the shift in removing the proposed convenience store and adding on to the existing store, the parking spaces that, um, are associated with the convenience store are going to be located farther south, uh, south of the access drive. So if someone's going to the site and they just want to go into the convenience store, if they enter from North Hagerty Road, more likely than not, they'll use one of the parking spaces and then cross over to the sidewalk in front of the convenience store. If they're entering from the north drive, uh, either of the north drives, more likely they'll park in the north part of the site. Um, unless they're filling up and then they'll use the gas pump as both for filling up and for using the convenience store. So that will conclude the major staff comments on the site plan. Because that we're now at the point of site plan review, uh, the planning commission's looked at the special land use plan. So there's a lot more detail required on a site plan than a special land use. But when this came before the planning commission in July, the applicants had been concurrently working through the site plan process. So those special land use plans reviewed at the July meeting were much more detailed than a typical special land use plan. So a lot of the same details that you see on this evening's plans were also reviewed on the July 10th meeting plans as well. So our recommendation is, um, our staff recommendation is to defer action on the site plan, pending receipt of revised plans that address the information noted in our staff review letter. If the application is deferred to the October 2nd meeting of the planning commission, um, this will be before the October 12, uh, 2023 ZBA meeting. Unless the applicants end up on the November ZBA meeting, then, um, the next planning commission meeting would still be before those next ZBA meetings. So if there's a deferral of the application to October 2nd, um, that wouldn't slow down the overall review process because the ZBA would have to review those proposed variances before both the special land use and the site plan go to the board of trustees for final approval. Um, but also we've included an option for, um, a recommendation to approve with conditions if the planning commission wants to consider that as well this evening. So there's two model motions drafted for your review. Uh, so that concludes our staff report and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Um, project sponsor, would you like to add anything? Maybe you can explain why you changed your design so dramatically and, um, else to say? Thank you. Um, please tell us your name and address for the record.
Uh, Rocky Aldo, 8773 North Hagerty Road, Canton Mobile Gas Station. I was here, uh, as Patrick said, back then. And we had a design that was, uh, almost just under 6,000 square feet and now we're just under 4,000 square feet with the addition. We decided to do that is due to the, um, difficulties of the construction time right now. They're calling us to, if we stayed with that site, uh, not just the overly costs and, uh, the, the length of time of construction. We're trying to leave the site not under construction for such a period of time. They're giving us really lengthy times now. You know, I'm sure as you guys know, like two years or something. We, we decided not to do that and if we were decide to do that, it would let us stay open, not so constructed and ugly during the period. And then we can tie them up together and potentially, uh, limit maybe 30-day, technically closed, halfway closed, and then we can keep it clean. We can keep it facilitated for the, you know, customers and things like that. Especially if we have the diesel island, we'll start in particular. That, that was one of the biggest reasons. And we were too excited to go with these plans and realizing how, you know, uh, construction is going on right now, we just finally, you know, we spent a lot of time and money liking the first plan, loving it. But we decided that we're gonna really make this look really nice and it's gonna have like a, a really, uh, modern elevation. It's not gonna be just an addition. It's gonna be like a, like an artist format. We'll, and then we'll provide, uh, real drawings, uh, probably very soon, uh, that we will have here. And that was the reason why.
Thank you. This is not a public hearing, so I guess we can just start with Commissioner Janowski. Would, do you have any, any questions or comments?
No question. I, I like the plan and the responsiveness. Looks good.
Commissioner Cruz?
What I don't like about this plan is the parking. You have to cross the main drive to get to your building and your ADA has to cross to get to your doors. Your old site had some parking near the building that could accommodate that. That's just something that's a little different.
Damn.
And unfavorable. I don't, I don't remember what your old plan had with regard to your spaces. I don't recall, but you're, you're putting parking, you know, further away from the building, especially those ADA spaces.
Yeah, that, that crosswalk, is there any way that it could turn and go up to the building or up to the sidewalk in front of the building sooner so that you're not wheeling your wheelchair all the way to the first, uh, car there where it's at the pump?
Yeah, makes sense. Just a comment to that, uh, parking. So the doors are moving slightly like maybe about 20 feet the other way, I think. It, yeah, there it is. You see it. So creating that parking area here is gonna be closer to the door now. And then, you know, on the other side, if you enter and you come in or if you go into the, uh, longer term, people will probably use that. Shorter term, people will use that. That's why we have that, the handicap there. But I agree with the sidewalk maybe possibly connecting. If you look at the site, it exists as is, um, kind of the same way it is now. We've added these parking spots so it's convenient. We've added these parking spots so it's convenient on both sides, longer-term users, shorter-term users, and, you know, easier float.
Well, your existing parking had, your existing has parking right adjacent to the building. Now you do not, right?
Well, no. So the building is staying the same way, we're just making it longer. So we're having the existing parking stay where it's at, we're just adding parking on the side opposite. So they're kind of...
You've eliminated your parking adjacent to your building.
Yeah, there's parking.
Oh, that was, yeah, the employee parking you're talking about, kind of, well, yeah, it's used for... That was one, yeah. That is, and then two for employees, that's correct. So, yeah, that's right. It was, I see what you're saying, on the south side. Yeah, that's right, there's, I think, three there. Yeah, 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 I thought you were talking about the, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the Joy Road side. Yep, there is a, there is a one ADA, and then there is a two for employees, that's right. And then now we're adding two, and then, you know, eight more or seven more. But that's just because we're making an addition. But I do like the driveway there. Yeah. Yeah, connect. Yeah. Yeah, I like that better.
Yeah, just to say more about that, I'm not sure why is there a ramp up towards the north end of the property there on the sidewalk up next to the building? I can see why there'd be a ramp up to the door, but why do we need to be able to turn right there? Is there some access?
Oh, that's that existing one, yeah. That's existing, yeah.
Oh, it's existing. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, I think it would be better to move it.
That's because, yeah, we had parking the other way, yep.
I'm sorry, could you please go to the mic, because we are recording this?
Sorry, my name is Alex Swarman, I'm an engineer for this project. So the original, actually, existing handicapped parking spaces are located on the north side of the, along the Joy Road. So with some kind of relocate, because we moved the entry door more to the south, so we decided to put the handicap parking spaces closer to the door. But I agree with you, we may probably gonna...
Sorry, I interrupted you, Commissioner Cruz. Did you have anything else to ask about?
No, but, so Patrick, you said there's other revisions that need to be made and resubmitted? That's an optional deferment, is that right?
Correct. There are some other, some other site elements. Mostly, they're fairly, fairly minor, they don't really deal with the site layout itself that much, but there are some things where, where planning commission review would be helpful to look at this again. Probably the most important item is the elevations of the building. Some of the sides of the building are longer and fairly blank, specifically the side that faces Old Hagerty Road, even though it's a seldom-traveled road, it's, there's not a lot of detail to the wall, so we had recommended having something like columns, framed brick patterns, spandrel glass on the north and the rear sides, just to add interest to the building itself. I can bring up those elevations here, and we can...
I was just going to ask you, too.
So here's the east side facing North Hagerty Road, so that's really the primary front. So there's, there's a mix of brick, glass, and then there's a, I think it's a faux wood siding here in the middle.
Limestone right there.
That's correct. And then this light gray is a limestone. Maybe that's wishful thinking, by the time they open, prices will be that low.
We're gonna have to have the pork chop.
What about a loon? Are you going to do a loon, too?
So this, this elevation at the bottom, this is the proposed elevation facing Old Hagerty Road. So it does have the mix of limestone and brick. It appears to meet the brick percentage of 50%, but it's a, it's a long facade that we recommend some other elements to help, help break up the expanse. And then this, this other facade for the rear, it's smaller because it's a longer, narrower building, but there are some elements that could help.
I agree with that.
What about the landscaping there? Is there anything with the landscaping to help that, so?
Landscaping can die, though. There are some shrubs and trees.
Yeah, so the landscaping will help. One of the items where the site plan would have to be revised, the foundation landscape requirements. The intent is to comply with the foundation requirements, which would apply to all four sides. But on the east side here, there's no foundation landscaping, which the planning commission can modify that requirement, and I think this would be a reasonable modification, because from the pumps to the station itself, there's no feasible area for the foundation landscaping. And there are available areas elsewhere on the site to plant that landscaping. But on the west side of the site, there's a number of trees and shrubs, including some ornamental trees that will help that view from the road, as well as on the, on the north side with a mix of trees and shrubs there. So the landscaping against the building will help.
Can drop like a real-life picture, you know, rendering, we can submit, where you'll see the real actual, the real limestone, the real bricks, the real siding and all that, the modern, not siding, but, you know, the new structure. We can do that, and if there's a recommendation that you'd want some addition, that's not really a problem. But I'll probably submit something soon where it's in real life, like renderings, where it, you know, we'd actually see it, not just the sketch.
It would be helpful if you showed the landscaping as well on there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just to show us.
Yeah. That's definitely, and it's all going to be a brand-new landscape, so we're getting out what we have, and we're bringing in brand-new.
Very nice. Okay. Commissioner Foster?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Weber?
Couple comments.
I believe we covered that last time on the, on the agenda. By 10th, I think we covered all the signs and requirements that I was agreeing on.
I know we talked about it, I don't know if we ever came to a resolution or anything.
Yeah, we can look back through our notes there to see if there was supposed to be like a do-not-enter sign.
I believe so. Yep.
So we do have the posts here that do show for the, for the stop signs on the site.
We actually recently submitted all plans to Wayne County, and this is, as you know, that Hagerty Road, both Hagerty, including jurisdiction of there. And we basically like gave, it's not the final approval, but, but gave us a okay with all these entrances and signage and everything else.
Here, there's a no-left-turn.
Yeah, I see the no-left-turn sign there.
That was one of their requirements.
The other comment, I just want to make sure I'm clear, the car wash is still getting torn down, correct?
Yes.
So it looks like, looks like you have a lot more landscaping on this property now, which is nice, but as Commissioner Zubor mentioned earlier, landscaping dies if it's not kept up, and you have a lot of landscaping on this plan. I would hope that it would be maintained well, so it continues to look, look nice and not cluttered and overgrown.
So like, we've been there over 25 years, and that was one of the things that we've done well. You're absolutely right, we have two acres of property. So it's first, it's costly, and it's challenging to maintain. We've done that, and every year we've kept it up with mulching, trimming, cleaning. And right now, we've been there 27 years some, so a lot of it is all grown in, with storms and things like that, they tear up stuff. It's not easy, so that's the reason we're recommending new landscaping, will buy us another 25 years of constant upkeep, and it's much better and much cleaner and healthier, and we're all for it, you know? Even when times were bad during COVID and no one was coming out, we were getting people out there and getting things done. So it is challenging, but we are familiar with it, because we've been doing it for so long. So we definitely want to...
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Okon?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner Singh?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner Watkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair, no comments.
Awesome. Well, I guess we've all had, the only comments I had, I've already made, so anything else from anybody that... Okay, any motions or anything?
I think it still has to go to ZBA, so it may be a good idea to defer it until we have ZB approvals on variances.
I'll take the motion, Madam Chair. Do I move that we defer action on the site plan for the redevelopment of an automobile filling station on parcel number 002-99-0002-707 at 8773 North Hagerty Road, pending receipt of revised plans that address the information noted by staff in its review letter to the planning commission? If the application is deferred to the October 2nd, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, this will be before the October 12, 2023 zoning board of appeals meeting. So deferring action to October 2nd will not result in any delay of the application being considered by the township board of trustees. I think I read the entire wrong motion, did I not? Wow, how about we give that another shot? Can I do that?
And we'll just erase the tape and redo.
How about that? Great. How about, I move to defer action on the site plan for the redevelopment of the automobile filling station at 8773 North Hagerty Road, parcel 002-99-0002-707, pending receipt of revised plans that address the information noted by staff in its review letter to the planning commission. That's a little bit better.
All right, I'm not, I'm not voting for Brian as like the best motion reader anymore, I'm just not.
I'll pass the torch.
It was dramatic, though. I mean, it certainly was dramatic. All right, Commissioner Okon, could you call the, oh, was there any further discussion? All right, Commissioner Okon, call the vote, please.
Sure. Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Okon, yes. Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Chairwoman Zubor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you. Next on our agenda is miscellaneous. We're going to discuss the master plan with Erin.
Hello, everyone. Included in your packet this evening is our regular update regarding the Canton Township Master Plan. So just as a general update, as I've mentioned before, most of our planning, public engagement events and activities have concluded as part of this project. We have heard from a number of people through the visioning boards, through the community events that we went to, the survey, the stakeholder discussions. It's been quite an adventure hearing from everybody, and it's been, it's been well-received, and we're really excited to, to start breaking it all down and putting together some draft text and materials for you all. So, yeah, the, the bulk of the engagement has concluded, however, we are still planning on having an open house that will be taking place later in this year or early next year, and that will happen after the planning commission has reviewed a lot of draft texts, concepts, ideas, maps, et cetera, and we, when we feel we have something to present to the public to get their additional feedback on. So it won't be completely formalized, but it'll be draft enough where we can say, hey, what do you think of this? Did we hit, did we hit it on the mark, or do we still need to tweak a little bit further? So, yeah, we don't have anything else coming up for the engagement. The master plan advisory board will continue to meet, they're going to meet again this Thursday, September 14th, they'll be discussing the environmental preserve, environmental preservation and sustainability topic. October is slated to be our last advisory board meeting, unless there is something that we need to go back and discuss with them at length. But the October meeting, we're going to be looking at the future land use map and density and some redevelopment sites, so we're in compliance with RRC. As always, those advisory board meetings are open to the public. So, yeah, the, the next phase of this project is, is moving forward, we're going to start drafting text, maps and whatnot, and the planning commission is going to be starting to meet on the third Monday of the month, as we discussed at our previous meetings, in which case we can discuss things a little bit more in-depth. We won't have anything standard at that meeting for you to look at, there will be no public hearings or site plans or anything like that. The third Monday of the month is designated specifically for master plan discussion and maybe some ordinance amendments discussion, but there won't be any action items for you to look at that. So it'll give us a really good opportunity to really look at some of these topics that we've been looking at through the advisory board and the public engagement, and really start to focus in and get your feedback on things, so we can do it in a, in a full and comprehensive way. So we're excited for that, that, that first meeting will take place next Monday here at the admin building, 7:00 PM, this, this room. So happy to answer any questions that you have.
I also wanted to point out that we got a letter from a member of the community, the email is from SJ, and it's signed Joseph, indicating, you know, some concerns about the flooding that we all experienced on August 24th, which was a really overwhelming flood event, and just suggesting that we give more thought to water, stormwater management here in the township. So I wanted to just mention that for the record. I don't know who, who amongst us drove that day, but wow, that was a day.
It was a day. Yeah, the public works and the township staff did an amazing job responding, public, public safety as well. And that is something that is, we're going to be looking at in-depth with the master plan advisory board meeting this Thursday, and then we'll have a significant section in the master plan, is how do we deal with, with those types of issues? You know, it's not something that we can, we can stop the rains from happening, but is there something we can do on a development side to help to mitigate some of those, those immediate effects? And in a 100-year storm or 500-year storm, we're not going to be able to fix everything, but are there small things, small changes, small tweaks that we can make that will help make it better?
Yeah, because those storms aren't going to be 100-year storms anymore in the future, so. Commissioner Weber suggested less parking, which is, less impervious area, yeah.
Done, no problem.
Done and done. Awesome. All right, anything else, Erin?
No, that was all I had.
Okay.
We look forward to seeing you all next Monday.
Yeah. And we are now at the public comment section with any members of the public, we have this vast audience, no offense, sir. Would you like to make any comments?
No, I'm good.
You're just here for entertainment value?
My name is Mike.
Ah, oh, okay, awesome, thank you.
I thought you were asking Patrick about the language for the motion, but I'm glad we got there together, you guys.
Well, thanks for coming. And anything else anybody wants to chat about?
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
All right. I figured, I, I opened myself right up to that. I figured that's what we were going to get. So we have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Weber, or it's Commissioner Watkins, and support by Commissioner Okon. Any, any further, any, any further discussion about that? No? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.